Thank you everybody, the time has come, uh seven o'clock to start our city council meeting. And normally we have, we're supposed to have on the schedule. Pastor Moulton, is he in the, in the building? Pastor Moulton has about thirty seconds. To lead us in prayer, sorry about that, to lead us in prayer will be Alderman Bolton. Alderman Bolton, would you like to please lead us in prayer? Everyone, please stand, remain, remaining following that, we have the pledge of the le- legions.
Gracious heavenly father, we come together today in one accord, asking your blessings to be upon this meeting. We ask for your holy spirit to help us execute and make proper decisions that will bless your people. Now father god, we acknowledge your presence, your grace, and your mercy towards us, and for this we give you thanks, amen.
Amen.
From my part of the nation, to the side of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All that excitement, I figured I'd do the most important thing, start the meeting with a roll call. Madam Clerk?
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Falcone.
Present.
Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Seeger. Alderman Mosio.
Here.
Alderman Villalobos.
Present.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Tempest. Mayor Cunningham.
Present.
Under mayor's comments. Tonight, we'll be hearing from Mr. Andrew Marsh, an engineer with H.R. Green, a recognized expert in public water systems. Those of you who have gone online and looked at the lengthy report his team drafted will find the answer to the most important question that's been brought, brought up in recent months. The water in Waukegan is pure, clean, and safe to drink. I trust as this presentation, you'll listen to this presentation for yourself and learn more about our Waukegan Water Plant. We've also invited you to work with us as we develop plans to make further long-range improvements. In connection to this presentation, I have asked or invited three senior staff members from the Waukegan Water Water Plant to attend tonight's meeting. There are many, there may be other workers from the plant in attendance as well. I would like to show my appreciation for everything that the Waukegan Water Plant staff does to keep our water safe. Let me also take a moment to thank local 150 operating, operating engineers business representative, Mr. Richard Fahy for his support during this process. At a previous meeting, we were informed that Catholic Charities was looking for a warehouse to store donated goods for the holiday season. We're pleased to let everyone know that Willing Foods Un-Sunset has donated space for this. On behalf of the City of Waukegan, Waukegan City Council, we thank Willing Foods, we also thank Catholic Charities for their great work. November thirteenth marked a somber anniversary in Waukegan's history. This was the fortieth anniversary of the murder of Sergeant Harry White while in the line of duty. Although Mr. White, Mr. Harry White's life was horrifically cut short, his memory continues today with his family and through his Waukegan family. Our first responders put themselves in harm way for our community, and their families graciously lend us their loved ones. We are all indebted to Sergeant Harry White, to the family of Sergeant Harry White, and to all of our first responders and their families. Earlier this month, I was proud to visit our state capitol in Springfield, Illinois in order to speak with state legislators about Waukegan. State legislators and leaders were excited to hear about our diverse community, its Waukegan's history, and our ideals for the future. So I hope everyone's takeaway, meaning the state legislators and leaders, was Waukegan is a vital city to the state of Illinois on this north shore. Thank you to Cool Ministries and to all of the people who donated personal items for the veterans in need. The bin is overflowing with items, and I just received tonight, an anonymous donor gave us a pallet. I think the pallet was worth over two thousand dollars. Two thousand dollars they donated, and it's called Hero Clean Laundry Detergent. So that's gonna be going, be donated to Cool Ministries on behalf of the anonymous donors, so we thank you, anonymous donors, whoever you are, we really appreciate that. Repeating our call from last meeting, our last meeting, please support Toys, please support Toys for Tots and children in need by bringing new unwrapped toys to the bin on the first and second floor of City Hall. Your generous efforts are appreciated. Upcoming events, free Thanksgiving dinner with all the trimmings is being offered at Big Ed's Barbecue, the Folic Lounge, and Seventeen North on Thanksgiving Day at noon. Thank you to those restaurants for their big hearts. Small Business Saturday on November twenty-fifth, remind, remind us to shop local on Saturday after Thanksgiving. Waukegan Main Street has coordinated with a number of businesses downtown. Rumor has it, you can take a selfie with Santa and Mrs. Claus from ten a.m. to three p.m. at Heart of the City, which is located at two eighteen North Genesee Street. Let's support our Waukegan businesses. Tree lighting, I want to invite everyone to join the Waukegan Park District, Waukegan Main Street, and myself for the Winter Wonder Walk and Tree Lighting at Jack Benny Plaza on Saturday, December second, starting at four p.m. The Genesee Theater will host Phil Vassar and Kelly Pickler on November thirtieth, the Midtown Men on December first, and A. Garfield Christmas on December second. Find shows at www-geneseetheater.com, and as always, buy your tickets early. For more info, check out all Waukegan events and activities on our website at waukeganil.gov and by using hashtag #ExploreWaukegan. I don't know if my mom is here tonight, but I'd like to wish my mother happy birthday, her birthday was on Sunday. I took her out and had some cake and ice cream, coconut cake that is. I believe Kevin Drury is in the crowd, are you here, Kevin Drury? Where are you at, come on up, sir. Thank you. The City of Waukegan does hereby present Kevin Drury, U.S. M. Marshall Amplification, this certificate of appreciation for providing free technical expertise and professional audio equipment on behalf of U.S. Music Corporation and Marshall Amplification of Buffalo Grove, Illinois, for the Seventh Annual Metal on the Rock Concert during the Seventh Annual Zombie Walk on Saturday, October twenty-second, October twenty-first, 2017, in downtown Waukegan, Illinois. I'd like to present this to you, I'll come right around there, sir. Always gotta stand in by the Waukegan sign right here. From my understanding, you were, you donated your time, your energy, which I think was of cost around over ten thousand dollars. And equipment, so we appreciate this, and making our city a great city where people come and to enjoy themselves. So on behalf of myself, our entire city council, citizens of Waukegan, thank you for giving your time. I haven't just like the. Sure. Come here to the mic if that. This is probably, I think, about my, this is my third year kinda getting involved.
You gotta use the mic if you're gonna be amplified.
The sound guy.
I say this is probably about my third year being involved with Zombie Walk and just some of the art walk over the last few years. Each year it seems to be getting a little bit bigger and a little bit better. And I know on behalf of U.S. Music and Marshall Amplifiers, know we're proud to be a sponsor of this for the City of Waukegan, and we really appreciate you guys having this for the community, 'cause I think it really benefits the community as well. And I just wanna say thanks again for this, I really appreciate it, and I look forward to doing it again next year. And last, but not least, this has been a year filled with triumph and challenges. As we prepare to celebrate Thanksgiving, I encourage everyone to take time to appreciate the positive forces in their lives and the blessings you've received. On behalf of myself, my family, I hope I can say this, of all the Aldermen, city staff of Waukegan, we wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, God bless. Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Taylor, to approve the regular meeting minutes from November sixth, 2017. Any questions to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried, audience time, Madam Clerk?
Art Cobb, you have three minutes.
Madam Clerk, I will pass this time.
Okay, thank you. Julio Guzman?
Good evening, Mayor Cunningham and members of city council, my name is Julio Guzman. I'm a campaign rep for the Sierra Club, and I live in the fifth ward. Since the launch of the Lake County Climate Action Pledge on August twenty-sixth, over a dozen state, county, and municipal leaders have committed to think globally and act locally. The Lake County Climate Action Pledge is intended to demonstrate our commitment to climate change, calling on us to support moving Lake County beyond coal, to embrace a long-term vision for communities powered by a hundred percent clean energy, and to prioritize green infrastructure and sustainable transportation planning. While there are many components of comprehensive action to reduce greenhouse gases, we believe these are three pillars fundamental, uh, we believe these three pillars are fundamental commitments for Lake County and work hand-in-hand with our efforts to create new jobs, support economic growth, and improve our quality of life. Moving forward, we will work together to provide opportunities for collaborative action, whether that is hosting roundtable discussions with clean energy businesses, community meetings for residents to learn about home energy efficiency improvements or policy recommendations to attract solar development. We also welcome your ideas. In keeping with the motto, with the motto, "Think globally, act locally", I'm pleased to invite you, Mayor Cunningham, Aldermen, Alderwomen, to join the Lake County Board Chairman, Aaron Lawler, the Sierra Club, and other Lake County partners and public officials for a hurricane relief fundraiser for Puerto Rico, which will include recognition of public officials committed to the Lake County Climate Action Pledge. This event is on December sixth, starting at six-thirty p.m. at the Puerto Rican Society right here in Waukegan. During the event, attendees will be encouraged to participate in a fifty-fifty raffle to raise money for Puerto Rican hurricane relief, and you'll have an opportunity to learn more about the Lake County Climate Action Pledge, as well as network with several community organizations in attendance. I'm hopeful that many, if not all of you, will be in attendance, and again, it's free, the public's invited. It's December sixth, six-thirty to eight-thirty at the Puerto Rican Society, thank you.
Thank you. William Powers?
Good evening, my name's William Powers of RTO Property. We are a owner and manager of about two hundred single-family homes and multi-units, most of them here in Waukegan, most of them single-family homes. Uh, we've been in business for about seven years, and we employ over twenty people here in Waukegan. I have two issues that I'd like to present to the council this evening. The first has to do with permit fees for nonprofit organizations. In addition to RTO Property, I'm also the president of the Board of the Affordable Housing Corporation of Lake County. We're a nonprofit organization that among other things works on distressed properties. We do this mostly in around Lake Beach and Mundeline because of our NSF grants and the lines of credit that those villages provide us to do that work. About a year and a half ago, I asked AHC to come here to Waukegan to start renovating properties, and we've renovated six homes and sold them to owner occupants throughout the town. And we also provide down payment assistance for first-time homebuyers, we've done that to about twenty residents this year. On average, AHC loses money on every single property that we sell. The last fifty homes that we've done, we've lost about twenty thousand dollars a home. Permit fees only increase these costs and increase our, our losses with those properties. And I, I think that it would make sense to consider an ordinance that would allow nonprofit organizations to get these fees waived, so that we could stretch the dollars that are so limited in our budget and renovate more properties here in Waukegan. We've had other local villages waive those fees for us, so I think it would make sense for Waukegan to consider that as well. The second issue is concerning distressed property throughout the, the city. As I mentioned, we own and manage about two hundred homes here in Lake County. We pay about six hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars in property taxes each year. Four hundred and fifty-two thousand is here in Waukegan. We're, we're heavily invested here, my, my fam, my, my wife's family's from here. And it's concerning when you see large buildings in our downtown, like two hundred North County, the YMCA Building, the Masonic Temple, the Waukegan Building, and many, many others sit vacant and blighted year after year when there's so many investors doing so much in the town to improve our, our city. This is a letter from the City of Lake Forest that was sent to me before I purchased a house there, and it's just a single-family home, and they wanted a plan, and they wanted a timeline on what I was gonna do with that distressed property. And I think it would make sense for the council.
Thank you, Mr. Powers.
To consider an ordinance that would.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Julius Watkins? No, oh, I didn't hear, Eugene Banks?
How everybody doing? Alright, I'm Eugene Ace Banks, I was born and raised here, how you doing, Sam? I was born and raised here, and first I'm gonna apologize for coming here with a personal agenda, and with this being my first city council meeting, I really hate to come with a personal agenda or personal, instead of coming for what the city may need or the problems in the city or whatnot. But I was coming because I have a business here, I've been owning it for ten years, and uh, without any loans or anything, I've been able to survive, even going to jail and coming home, and my business is still here for me, it's a t-shirt shop in Waukegan, Illinois. And I think one thing about the city is like, the most important people in the city never really speaking with the important people, I guess, in the street, so to speak. So maybe if they seen us at certain events together, that they would look and look like this is more of a bond, instead of them having to come here to see you guys, or you having to come to, or see our face in, in the paper or in a bad situation to meet us. So with that being said, um, like I said, I haven't had any business loans or anything, and I'm not here for that, and we're not here to ask for anything, but we have a big event going on this Saturday at Gurnee Mills, I put it together myself, and I've been on some TV shows, Chicago PD, Empire, and I'm from here, and I've been doing a real good example on showing people you can come home and go straight and still have a good life. I've been home now five years without no police contact at all. But, um, we having an event this Saturday, we'd love to see everybody come, it's at Gurnee Mills Movies, it's a comedy about my shop, it's clean, and I just wanted to come down to the council and show that we doing something good out there too. And like I told the news son, you know, maybe this is something that deserved to be in the paper, because if I did something bad or caught a case, I would be in the paper for that, so maybe they should put me in the paper. Y'all take care, alright?
Thank you. Ralph Peterson?
Hello, everybody. Okay, I'm here today, I was contacted by the Latino community, I was informed that for twenty years employed with the City of Waukegan, a Carmen Santiago was fired. She was fired, I was told, because of Mr. Soto was going to run against your mother, mayor, but now all of a sudden he's not gonna run, and he's been offered a position. Well, I done a little investigation, that turned out to be valid, okay? I was also informed that Suzanne Figueroa was going to run against your mother, and you called her in your office and threatened to fire her if she ran. It's pretty low, bruh. Also, Mr. De Villa is seeking employment and planning and zoning, and he failed his background check, and rumor has it, you're still going to hire him. Now this one is on a personal note, I have a terrible problem, mayor. When you can approach a senior citizen, and I'm so thankful, she sits here, right here as I speak, and use gutter language in the term of, "I'm the pimp of the city now." I sat back and watched everybody else, now I'm the pimp, it's their turn to watch us. Man, that is so disrespectful, it is a crying shame. That's street corner talk, and I'm very disappointed in you. And for those who say Ralph Peterson is here just to complain, if you noted, I pointed at the senior citizen, and that is low, sir, and I would like to close by saying, we have something for pimps around here, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson, that concludes the, um, audience time, sir.
Your honor, real quick, Eugene, what, what time is that event at Gurnee Mills? Yeah, yeah, see, how quick, how quickly you forget, yeah. If I put Coach Mo up here, would that help you out? You two, what, what time?
It's the eight o'clock, eight, ten o'clock show on this Saturday, it's a ticket, I'll trade it off.
Oh my goodness. You got it. Now that, now that was classic. Oh my goodness. Alright, coming up next is a motion by Alderman Falcone, second by Alderman Bolton, to adopt a resolution. I'm sorry, present a resolution celebrating Waukegan U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary, fifteen years of service in the city of Waukegan. Madam Clerk, would you like to read it?
Resolution seventeen R. ninety-four, celebrating the fiftieth anniversary of Waukegan's United States Coast Guard Auxiliary Flotilla Zero-Nine-Five-Dash-Four-One-Dash-O-Five. Whereas United States Coast Guard Auxiliary Flotilla Forty-One-Dash-O-Five of the ninth western region of the United States Coast Guard held their first meeting in Waukegan on the first of November of nineteen sixty-seven. And whereas the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary is the uniformed volunteer component of the United States Coast Guard and supports the Coast Guard in nearly all missions. And whereas the forty-plus members of the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary Flotilla Forty-One-Dash-O-Five maintain an active education and operations center and two dedicated patrol boats headquartered in Waukegan Harbor. And whereas United States Coast Guard Auxiliary, Auxiliary Flotilla Forty-One-Dash-O-Five conducts safety patrols and search and rescue missions on Lake Michigan, as well as teach safe boating classes, perform free vessel safety checks, marine dealer visits, and provides speakers to community groups for boating and water safety-related subjects. And whereas United States Coast Guard Auxiliary Flotilla Forty-One-Dash-O-Five performs hundreds of patrol hours each year, and their members log in over five thousand hours of public service each year as volunteers. And whereas twenty seventeen marks the fiftieth anniversary of Waukegan's United States Coast Guard Auxiliary Flotilla Forty-One-Dash-O-Five, and now therefore, via resolve that Mayor Cunningham and members of the city council of Waukegan, Illinois do hereby recognize the past, present, and future members of United States Coast Guard Auxiliary Flotilla Forty-One-Dash-O-Five for their long and dedicated service to the citizens and visitors to our community. And be it further resolved that a suitably embossed copy of this resolution signed by the mayor and city clerk be presented and read into public record at the city council meeting the twentieth day of November, twenty seventeen.
Alright, ladies and gentlemen, come on up. We'll take a picture, we'll take one together, it's like we did last time, is that okay? We'll take a picture, we'll take one together with.
You want the Alderman?
One picture with the Alderman as well.
He's asking you guys to get in the picture.
How you doing, sir? They throw a great dinner too. They throw a great dinner, everybody. Everybody, how you doing? One, I wanna thank you for inviting me to the dinner, we had an awesome time at the Portico's, do a great birthday cake on top of that. I've learned so much about what you do to make our community only proud of itself and proud of you, what you do. If I'm not mistaken, these are volunteer, volunteer, for fifty years in our city, let's give it up. And myself, our Waukegan City Council, and all the citizens of Waukegan, we thank you for all of you who do to keep our waterway safe. Alright. Nice photo with all of our Aldermen and, and, and city officials behind us, you can do it like this. Uh-oh, they're gonna tell us what to do.
Alright, everybody's looking here.
Uh-oh, there it is.
One more. Alright, everybody else, jump in.
We're good?
Pretty good.
Alright, thank you very much. Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, thank you very much, appreciate it, thank you. I know someone's gonna speak, this is military, you have to. Right here, sir.
Okay, we wanna thank the mayor and the council and the city of Waukegan for the, the honor, recognition of our service for fifty years of service for the community. It's our privilege to be able to serve the community, the city of Waukegan, and also the U.S. Coast Guard, and, uh, we are, we're happy to, to provide that service, and we're hoping to be able to provide for another fifty years in the future. Thank you.
Okay, alright, we gotta do it one more time.
Okay, one more.
Yes, Alderman as well.
So good.
One.
It's my, my job. Engage it.
Alright. And on this way, we wanna present to you the number four, this is a member of fifty-nine, birthday. Number fifty-nine for the fifteen-fifty-nine family. Thank you very much, thank you very much, sir.
Nice, thank you, happy Thanksgiving. There is a motion on the floor in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion's passing, carry. Item B.
I don't think she's here. I don't see her.
Alright.
Mary Beth's over here, too.
Alright, we're gonna go ahead and skip item B, everyone. Alright. Motion by Alderman May, second by, by Alderman Villalobos, uh, to allow the presentation of HR Green in reference to our, our water plant. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, the long-awaited presentation.
You gotta open the slide door.
Uh, the slide, the slide door needs to...
Yeah, the front slide.
Uh, CD.
There you go.
It's coming. Here we go.
We're gonna bring the lights down a little bit, everybody.
This will take a little while.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Marsh. I'm here with HR Green. I'd like to talk this evening a little bit about the water treatment plant. I was, uh, wanting to cover a few topics tonight, uh, starting with the introduction and our overall goals for our assessment of the water treatment plant and the approach. We'll go through an overview of our findings and recommendations, and have time for, uh, next steps and questions at the end. Uh, the primary reason we're here tonight is because there was an anonymous letter written to the mayor and the aldermen accusing, uh, several things. One was mismanagement by the water superintendent. Another one was the disrepair of the water treatment plant. And, uh, to quote, uh, part of the letter, there was, uh, an accusation that there was compromising both drinking water quality and sufficient water delivery to the city residents and businesses. So, a very serious, uh, very serious claim that we have spent some time investigating ever since. Uh, and there were fourteen examples in the letter of, uh, situations that we, uh, investigated further. So, our goals for this project is to, uh, assess if the water was safe to drink, and evaluate and prepare the response to the mayor and council, and do a condition assessment of the major pieces of equipment at the water treatment plant and the remote booster stations that serve the customers in the city. To do this, we interviewed all of the, uh, operation and maintenance and laboratory staff at the water treatment plant individually. We also reviewed the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency permit that the water treatment plant holds, and, uh, analyzed and reviewed the water quality samples and testing results that have been taken for the last several years. We also looked at the water main breaks that have occurred in the city, out in the water distribution system for the last several years. We looked also at, uh, we looked into these fourteen examples from the anonymous letter to, uh, dig deep into the reasons for those, uh, examples. We also inspected each of the major pieces of equipment at the water plant and prepared a report. So, let's start with the big one, and that is, is this water safe to drink? And, uh, in order to assess the safety of the water, we looked at the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency permit. We looked at the records of the lab data that was taken on the water that's being produced for the last several years. We also looked through the last several years' worth of monthly operating reports that were submitted. We also, uh, looked at the, uh, forms submitted to the Illinois EPA and the records provided on the IEPA drinking water website. And I'm happy to report that the water is safe to drink according to all of these criteria, and it has met all of the primary drinking water standards for the last several years in which we were, uh, assessing the water quality. So, that is the good news. Unfortunately, I don't have just good news. Unfortunately, there are, uh, some needs at the water treatment plant, uh, and most of them are surrounding the age of the water treatment plant. The age of the water treatment plant is ninety years old. It was built in originally nineteen twenty-seven, and then it was, uh, added on to again in nineteen sixty-seven. And I will cover a few of our highest priority recommendations from the report here tonight, but I won't get into the weeds of all of the fourteen issues because I think I would lose everyone and, uh, not keep everyone awake. But, uh, I'll try to cover the highlights. So, uh, first, uh, a word about the water distribution system. This is the piping underground that delivers water to all the businesses and residents in Waukegan. There are three hundred and thirty-four miles of water mains, and we looked at, uh, the locations of each of the water main breaks over the last four years. And we saw patterns that there were repeated breaks in the same portions of town on the same pipes. Year after year, there were repeated breaks in the same locations or nearby to one another in the same block, for example. And here we have the, the, uh, streets with water mains that have the most number of breaks over that four-year period. And we've listed the location and the limits of each of those pipes that have water main breaks year after year after year. The good news on this list is that last one on Belvedere Street, uh, has been recently replaced, and the work was completed at the end of October, as I understand it. So, one of these has been addressed. The other four still need to be addressed. And we recommend replacing that, those segments, those segments of water main to be proactive and not wait for the next water main break since there's a, a history of main breaks in those locations. I also wanna talk more in detail about our recommendations for improvements at the ninety-year-old water treatment plant and give a couple of operational recommendations as well. One of the biggest concerns and highest priorities is regarding the high-service pumps. These pumps are, uh, what, uh, sends treated water out into the distribution system. And on the lower right-hand side is the pump, and on the upper left-hand side is a valve. And these valves are original to the plant, and they have gone well beyond anyone's, uh, imagined service life. And there are mechanical pieces of equipment that need to be replaced, and many of them are in disrepair right now. So, uh, we are recommending replacement of the valves on the high-service pumps. And much of the electrical gear on the high-service pumps is also original, and we recommend a more thorough inspection of that electrical equipment to see what remaining life there may be. But it is original and, uh, probably due for replacement as well. Another big concern is, uh, sludge disposal. So, any part of, uh, any water treatment plant, rather, has, uh, sludge as a waste product as the water is treated. And there is a, uh, uh, pipe that we need to make sure has been isolated so that it cannot discharge into the harbor. And, uh, many of the employees at the water treatment plant weren't aware of this pipe. It's been there for years. We just wanna make sure that it's isolated and not able to carry, uh, filter backwash water into the harbor because it may have that potential if it's not isolated properly. So, this will require some more investigation to make sure that's isolated because the, the water treatment plant is not allowed to discharge to the harbor. We also have, uh, some photos here up on the screen that show, uh, water plants of this age, uh, may have asbestos. It was a commonly used insulating material and fire retardant. And, uh, and also, there is a possibility for lead paint. We have recommended that several of these be tested for, uh, lead-based paint and asbestos to make sure that those can be, uh, removed and restored properly and safely so that everyone's health at the plant is not in jeopardy. It's just, uh, suspicious given the age of the plant. There are three booster stations in the water distribution system that help, uh, raise the water pressure to different parts of town. Two of them, uh, we identified needing, uh, to be rehabilitated and renovated. At the Beechnut Booster Station, we, uh, are recommending to install a new standby generator and pumps. And the Golfmoor Booster Station also needs, uh, new generator and refurbishment as well. The third booster station is the newest, and, uh, it's in the best condition of the three. We use chlorine at the water treatment plant. It's a hazardous gas, but, uh, it's also required to help disinfect the water before it goes out into the distribution system to kill any bacteria that may be remaining in the distribution system before it's delivered to the residents. So, while it is required, it is also a hazardous gas. It needs to be treated very carefully. The, uh, safety equipment, uh, has, um, gone, uh, it's, uh, well beyond the end of its life for the safety equipment that's there, and these regulations, as you can imagine, have gotten more stringent over time, and it was never designed for today's requirements. So, we are recommending new chlorine gas leak detection and safety equipment. There is a computer, uh, program that we use to look at all the pieces of equipment within the water treatment plant and look at the remote booster stations to look at things like how the pumps are running and water pressure and things like that. The system is now eighteen years old, and as you can imagine with things in, uh, technology, they get replaced quickly. And the eighteen-year-old, uh, monitoring system, that SCADA is an acronym that, uh, doesn't matter what it stands for, but it's just a remote monitoring, uh, software. And that is out of date, and we're recommending replacement. And also, it does require annual maintenance, uh, and we are, uh, also recommending that it get the attention of an annual maintenance contract as well. The heart of any water treatment plant is the filters, and we have two generations of filters. Filters one through ten are original to the nineteen twenty-nine plant, eleven through fourteen in the nineteen sixty-seven addition. And the filter media is, for the most part, original to both of those, um, generations of, uh, filters. There was some filter media that augmented the newer filters in more recent years, but, uh, the, excuse me, I stand corrected. That's not correct. The media has been replaced, just not recently. I misspoke earlier, sorry. But, uh, despite that, the media that is there should be tested to make sure that it has the remaining life to continue to provide good drinking water quality for the years to come. This is a photograph of one of the filters, and what the arrow is pointing to is where a table should be for holding, supporting a valve actuator. And, uh, this filter's been out of service for a number of years. We're recommending that this filter gets the attention to repair it and restore it into service. Without this filter in operation, the other filters are having to work a little bit harder. And all of the filter valves on all of the filters are original to the plants, to the two generations of the plants. This table on the photograph on the left is similar to the one that was missing in the previous slide. And the, uh, photo on the lower right-hand corner shows the, uh, age of the existing valves in the newer side of the plant. So, because of the age, we're recommending new valves on the filters. That's not an easy thing to do because these are always in service. As you can imagine, uh, we all wanna continue to drink the water from day to day. So, it becomes a challenge on how to, uh, develop a strategy for replacing each of those while continuing to meet the water demands of the city. This photo shows a few of the leaks that are in different areas of the water treatment plant right now. There are several leaks in the ninety-year-old building that need to be addressed. Some may be groundwater infiltrating into the basement. Some may be rainwater infiltrating into the, uh, brick facade on the buildings. And other, uh, may be, uh, the concrete cracked in treatment basins. All of them need to be addressed, uh, structurally and, uh, repaired. Both of these photos show, uh, flow meters. They mi- meter the flow coming into the water treatment plant from Lake Michigan. Uh, neither one is located in a very good location and does, both had, struggle with providing reliable, accurate results. One of the unfortunate things about this is that when you compare the water coming into the plant, it does not compare favorably to the water coming out of the water treatment plant. That's how inaccurate these meters are. So, we have recommended replacing these flow meters. Again, that's not an easy thing to do while you're continuing to treat water. So, there has to be a very carefully orchestrated strategy for replacing these. There are some ventilation issues in the raw lift building. You can see some corrosion on the piping that is in the lower level of the raw lift building. Uh, if you can imagine, this is a, uh, a very corrosive environment where there is, uh, a chlorine odor because of the pre-chlorination as water comes in from the lake, and then a very wet environment because of the condensation of the pipes. And proper ventilation will extend the life of all of this piping. We add fluoride at the water treatment plant. It's good for our teeth. It helps, uh, just like fluoride in your toothpaste, we add just a little bit of fluoride to the water as well. And, uh, these are the pumps that are dedicated to adding that little bit of fluoride to the water. And one of them is not working, and the other one, uh, has a leak. So, we would like to repair and restore this fluoride pump to continue to do its job for the years to come. We do have some operational recommendations. These are a couple of the highlights. Locking out and tagging out equipment. That just means that when a pump, for example, is de-energized, that someone else can't come along and turn it on while somebody else is working on it. It's a safety precaution, as you can imagine. And then, we have also recommended in the report to start conducting weekly meetings with the water treatment plant staff to update them on upcoming maintenance and capital products, generally improve communication within the plant staff. So, those are the highlights of, uh, a number of projects that we've identified that need to be addressed at the water treatment plant. I haven't got into all of them. These were some of the higher priority ones tonight, for obvious reasons, I hope. Uh, but some of our next steps will be to meet with the city staff and help to finalize the prioritization of those improvements. We do have, uh, a host, a long list of improvements that need to be made at the water treatment plant, and we realize that is very expensive. And we wanna present not just the problem, but also some funding alternatives. And there are a few that are contained in the report that I encourage you to review that are available to the city to help fund these improvements. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have, and I'll do my best to answer them. And we want to present not just the problem, but also some funding alternatives. And there are a few that are contained in the report that I encourage you to review that are available to the city to help fund these improvements. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have, and I'll do my best to answer them.
At this time, we will ask...
I have a couple of questions.
I'm sorry?
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, I'm going to go with the Alderman. Questions from the Alderman, all right? Alderman, Alderman Taylor. And before we get started, let Alderman Valco, he's assisting us tonight, he's our engineer.
These are like that?
Yeah, we don't need this any longer, right?
Correct.
All right, yes. And he's non-union. Thank you, Alderman Valco. Alderman Taylor.
First, I really want to say thank you to the employees and to the union for coming to the city. I think initially, this letter was perceived by some as being a letter from disgruntled employees. I don't think employees send a letter that could jeopardize their jobs if they feel that it's not really necessary, if they had other places to go. I don't think that's how you get up in the morning and say, gee, I think I want to try and slam my job. This is a last resort. So I really want to thank those employees for coming forward because it takes a lot of guts and courage to do that, so thank you. In looking at the report, I really feel that about ninety percent of the time, the employees' questions were very, very valid and legitimate things. Some of the things like the sludge that you talked about running through a pipe, that is a lack of training, that they didn't know that that's where it was running. So there's not just technical problems here, but there's some communication and management problems that also need to be addressed as part of this that I think we need to go deeper One of the, there's a couple of things that concern me. One of the things that was brought up is that the employees said that there were two out of nine pumps that were not functional. You now say there's three out of nine. Exactly what is the number that the city can go down to before this is detrimental to the water system? I didn't see that in the report. Am I missing something or was that answered and I didn't see it?
Great question. Thank you for asking. I can direct you to the part of the report that shows the status of each of the six high-service pumps. Great. If I could direct you to page twenty. On the bottom of the page, shows a summary of each of the six high-service pumps at the water treatment plant. And it shows which of the six are currently operational.
But that doesn't really tell me like how many pumps out of the nine that I can have before it jeopardizes the safety of the water, if only six out of nine are working.
I got you. Well, first, let me just clarify, there are six high-service pumps, not nine. But to your question of how many we can lose without jeopardizing the level of service, it was designed with six in mind and it would be wonderful to have all six in service. It would be my first objective. Short of that, when I have visited the plant, there are two pumps in service. And usually, that is adequate to meet the demand for the times that I have been to the plant. So the ones that are operational now are adequately meeting the demand today. A challenge would be if there was, God forbid, a fire in town and the demand for water increases quickly and you would have to turn more and more pumps on to meet that demand. So that's when it stresses the system a little bit more and more pumps are called into service. There are currently enough pumps to meet that demand, but as I started, it would be nice to have the use of all of those pumps. That's why we have recommended the repair and restoration of all of the valves. Does that better answer your question?
Yeah, so there's six pumps and how many are working?
I believe five are able to operate.
I thought I'd seen that there were three of them out, so, okay. That clarifies that a little bit. Again, I want to thank you for your work because I think you, from an engineering point of view, you've hit on, I mean, it's just old and a disaster and we need to address this. But I'm also concerned from a management point of view that we need to have some kind of hotline or something that employees can report things. If they're afraid to go either through our HR department, to go to the mayor, there has to be a safe way for employees to report instances and not be penalized. One other quick question I have for you. You talk about the pumps, that as they're leaving the water department, they're not contaminated. What happens if we've misread like a flow number and it gets out? And it's fine when it leaves, but how about when it dispenses? Is it fine?
Great question. And that's one of the fundamental principles behind that chlorine disinfection process that I described earlier. That chlorine maintains a residual out in the distribution system. It's a disinfectant that will continue to kill bacteria in the water wherever it's introduced. So that's a safety net toward the health and safety of all of us. And it's been, generally speaking, a huge improvement in human health over the last several decades.
Thank you very much in putting up with me since I'm not an engineer, obviously, so, thank you.
Thank you. If I could, I would be remiss and I apologize for not including this in my presentation earlier. I do want to thank all of the plant's staff. Everyone was very cooperative with all of our snooping around and looking in every corner of the water treatment plant. I apologize for not saying that earlier and I appreciate all their time.
Alderman May.
I'm also not an engineer, so this is very difficult reading. Under, when you're talking about the flow meters in the report, you referred to a special exemption permit that kind of caught my eye. So can you explain that a little bit? Does Waukegan operate with a special exemption permit that allows us to put more chlorine in the water than you say another? I'm just trying to understand that piece of it.
I believe the special exemption permit that you're referring to refers to water loss in the system. It's a separate issue from the disinfection. And the water loss has to do with water that's entering the water treatment plant is metered and water that's leaving the water treatment plant is metered. And those two numbers don't compare well to one another because of where the flow meters are located and because of their age, and that's why we've recommended replacement. So the special exemption has to do with the amount of water loss. Because Lake Michigan water is a precious, valuable resource, we don't want to waste it. And they have given a recommendation on the amount of water that any community that withdraws water from Lake Michigan can lose, so to speak. So what they do is they total up all of the water meters in all of the businesses and homes throughout each community and compare that number to the amount of water that's leaving the water treatment plant. And those two numbers should compare very closely. Unfortunately, here in Waukegan, those numbers do have quite a bit of water loss and we summarize that water loss in the table. That special exemption permit is pertaining to the water that's lost. It's not a very good named word. It's not lost, it's just leaking from the water system.
It's a significant number, I mean, it's a very significant number, which may or may not be true. And does it, it also determines the chemicals that we're using to treat our water? If we're relying on the flow meter to tell us how much water we're treating and we can't trust those flow meters?
Correct. Flow meters are used to flow pace the amount of chemicals that are added to treat the water. And the more accurate the flow meter, the more accurate the chemical addition. So we would also benefit from replacing those flow meters to more accurately dose the chemicals that are used at the plant.
So it's not just a revenue loss, it also could potentially...
Help refine the treatment process, yes.
Okay. I mean, to me, that sounds like a pretty major concern from both aspects, from both point of views, but always from public health first.
I agree.
My other question or confusion is this sludge issue, like how we didn't dispose of our sludge for thirty-four months and that just goes by for almost three years. It's not like something any of us up here would know about. It's like, how does a water plant run for almost three years not dispose of its sludge with the potential of that sludge running back into our lake? I'm just a little confused. I mean, someone has to be scratching their head, what does Waukegan do with their sludge?
Great question. So the backwash water that has that sludge can do one of two things. One is a small portion of it can go back to the hood of the plant and be recycled and re-treated. The majority of it is thickened, basically, and stored. And right now, the city uses a third-party company to come in and dewater that sludge and that process is done two times a year currently. We did find that there was, as you pointed out, a thirty-four-month period where we can't find any record of sludge being disposed of. And hopefully, it just backed up into the water treatment plant. And our concern is that, and what we've recommended further investigation in, is that the piping out to the harbor is completely isolated and there is no possibility for that sludge to enter the harbor.
When I read your report, it led me to believe that we don't even have the capacity to hold that much sludge. So I'm just wondering, where did it go?
It's an excellent question and it does need to be disposed of regularly and I don't have a better answer for you, I'm sorry.
No, I appreciate that and I'm, obviously, you're the messenger, but when I'm looking at the plant and I'm thinking for thirty-four months, something that's supposed to be done pretty regularly isn't done, I'm kind of scratching my head. And, you know, Lake Michigan is a crucial source for not just Waukegan, for the world. And I just hate to think that we were putting it...
And where's our management procedures that prevent that from happening? That's, it's not just technical from an engineering point of view, but there's a lot of management issues here that are a problem. That's all I have right now, thanks.
Alderman, did you have a question?
Yeah, Alderman May, Alderman. Carol asked the ones that I was sort of going to ask, but just along the fact of this whole process, I would truly hope that any city employee, if they think something's amiss in any work, any department, that they feel like they could come to somebody, either one of us or the mayor or their direct supervisor, obviously, and say, hey, this ain't right. Because I know all the Alderman up here don't want anything that's not correct, not taken care of. I think I can speak for all the Alderman that I know up here. And I obviously can speak for the mayor, knowing him that long too. Obviously, you see, we were concerned with this letter and we hired these people to find out what's wrong and now we know what's wrong and now we have an idea what we have to try to do to try to fix it. We got a lot, a lot to do. So I appreciate that and I also appreciate the water, the plant employees for coming forward for this. But in the future, any city employee that sees something that they don't think is quite right, I encourage them to go to their supervisor. They don't, there is a process and a procedure to try to follow and if it doesn't happen, you can always, at least to this Alderman, you can always come to me. And if it needs to be confidential, it needs to be confidential. But we, you know, we can't have organization where people feel like they can't come, tell people that something's wrong. That's just, that's just how I feel. But I appreciate the work that everybody's done and we'll roll our sleeves up and get to it.
Alderman Dillow, did you have any questions?
No, I just wanted to say, I didn't have any questions, but I do want to make the comment of your report, I really liked the way you laid it out with your findings, your conclusions and recommendations and the overall argument at the end. I didn't get through it in entirety. I have read your executive summary, your recommendations. I've read some of the bullet points of the fourteen concerns and I'm still trying to get through all those, but overall, it's made the whole situation a bit clearer for me. The visuals help with the images, so I do appreciate that. We've had a great, just the time I've been on here, we've had to read many documents, reports, so I think yours has actually been one of the ones that's more coherent initially to me, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right. What we're going to do, if there are some questions from the audience, we ask that you probably come to your seat, sit at your seat. You have, you only have three minutes there. I hope it don't take you three minutes to ask a question, but we will take those questions at this time. Anyone from the audience who would like to ask a question? I know you had your hand up, so why don't you go, Mr. McElmore, and answer your question to HR Green representative.
We had a certain amount there that seemed like there was a lot of truth in it than what your report goes with, what their letter says. I don't know if Alderman and Alderman can agree with that, we should, because their letter basically said the water was safe for right now, but we got the same problems that you just said, lots of sludge and everything. But one of the things I wanted to ask you, what's the first thing that you think needs to be done?
I think the, so the question, if everybody didn't hear, was what's the most important part of this that needs to be addressed first, in my opinion? My opinion is that the high-service pumps and the discharge, excuse me, the valves that are original to the plant, getting those replaced as quickly as possible would be a great place to start. It's a critical part of the whole process and vital to continuing to provide water to the community.
One of the things you said in your report...
Clyde, you get one question, man, but you get two for right now. Go ahead.
You said I have three minutes?
No, go ahead, go ahead. We're good, we're good.
Well, one of the things you said in your report, that the EPA, that the numbers were accurate and one of the things in the letter was saying that the numbers was changed. Could they be changed with the equipment that's... You know, the numbers, like if it falls below, you have to call the EPA. But every time, in the letter, it stated that every time that it happened, some management would change the numbers, so they never did call the EPA?
You know, Clyde, and I hear your concern, but now you're talking about our employees being dishonest. And I, I'm, I hope, I trust, hold on a second.
Can it be done? I'm asking them just...
I understand that. I trust our employees, period. I trust them.
I drink the water there.
Well, you just told you, but we just confirmed, the water is safe to drink. The issue of that is fine. What we're, what you're asking now, will our employees do something dishonest to hurt the city of Waukegan and the people that are here? I'm telling you that I, I've allowed you to speak, please let me respond to that. I don't want him or anyone else responding to a question that I think the mayor and the Alderman up here, I trust the employees here. I trust them. Now, we find something, that someone has done something wrong within our organization, they will be dealt with. And that's period. But to put that on, I hear what you're saying, sir, but to put that on someone who's coming in to give us an assessment...
Can I rephrase the question?
All right, why don't you go ahead and rephrase the question, sir?
Can the numbers be changed? By with the equipment that they got up there?
I just refer you to our report and the findings in the report.
Okay.
So I got to FOI you your report, because I'm not a city employee.
It's online. You don't have to FOI anything, it's online. It's been online. We have nothing to hide here. nothing to hide here. This was a, a, a letter, an anonymous letter was brought to not only myself, but the council. We felt that we needed someone independent to come in and give us an assessment. The assessment has been concluded. We're going to go back and strategic plan as to what course of action to take. And, and for anybody, we have the findings. Give us, not only myself, and staff, but the council, an opportunity given us to go back and do some strategic planning as to what course of action we need to take. That's what I, I ask everybody right now. The most important thing was, according to, you know, someone who stood up here and said that our water, city of Waukegan water, was that of Flint, Michigan. We've answered that. We already knew about some issues regarding our plant, the age of the plant. We knew that. We understood that. We have the findings now. We're ready to now tackle those findings and move forward. That's what assessment does. So anonymous, thank you. Not anonymous, the goal was to get the assessment completed. The assessment is completed. Now let's go into some strategic planning. They have some, laid out some things to us, going to come back, we're going to present this not only to the Aldermen, but to the public, and we're going to move forward. There's nothing, nothing, folks, to hide about what's going on. I, Alderman, the public, want this in the best condition as humanly possible. And that's where we're at. But thank you, I thank not only you, but others, for being concerned. That's the Waukegan way. Are there any more questions for Mr.? Okay, sir, would you like to stand up and...?
Yes.
Right. Julio, not to be a dead horse here, but it sounds like when you started the presentation, you said the water, at whatever stage, meets IPA standards, therefore is safe to drink. Then you went on to show us a bunch of risks that might make it so that, I mean, is it really meeting IPA standards, if that makes sense? So that said, I guess my question is, is it a reasonable thought to have that maybe the water's not meeting IPA standards in reality? Two, are the IPA standards under runner for Trump currently even strong enough to protect us? And then, three, do we know if the water, do we know what they're testing for? I mean, this is an industrial lakefront, it's a mile off the stream, you know, several hundred pounds of toxins are going in from an industrial plant. So those are my three questions.
Can I, can I speak? Mayor, can I speak for a minute?
Okay. Alderman Taylor?
To address your concerns, I, I did tell you that I thought the employees were about ninety percent accurate on this. In addition, what I'm trying to say to you is, not just do we need to work on the physical plant, but you can make all the repairs in the world. It's obvious that some of these employees did not know the procedures. So we need to start with the management process at the same time that we're working on this. Because employees, why do they not know some of these procedures? That should come from management, from the top down. You can change all the facilities you want, but if you don't change the management style, you're kind of wasting your time. So it's a two-way process, and that's what the employees have clearly said. The fact that they didn't feel comfortable coming to our staff really bothers me. And that's why I, I feel like we really need to look at having a hotline that employees can report things anonymously. It's part of the process. Obviously, they feel that there's a fear of retaliation, which is not going to promote about all of us working together and us getting to that point that we're all on the same team.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman Taylor. Sir, to the question that was presented by Julio.
I'll do my best to try to answer your questions. So I believe the first part of your question was regarding my statement earlier that the water was safe to drink, but then giving several examples of issues that need to be addressed in the plant. I believe your question, I'm paraphrasing, is that my two statements seemed contradictory to you, that it's both safe to drink and there's work to be done at the plant. Is that a fair assessment?
Well, that relying on meeting IPA standards...
So, to that part of the question, the water is safe to drink, but to continue to provide safe water into the foreseeable future for the businesses and residents of Waukegan, there are a number of things that need to be addressed to prolong the life of the existing water treatment plant. The facility is ninety years old and does need to be the focus of some attention and funding to continue to provide safe drinking water to the community. But nothing that we found in all of our research of water quality data for the last several years would suggest that anything but safe water was produced at the plant. So I hope that helps to clarify that part of your question.
Yeah, and because I probably have like thirty seconds left, I'm just curious, are water plants like these designed to be able to be capable of, like, dealing with potent pollution, for example? You know, I'm just going to make it very clear. Industrial lakefront coal plant wastewater discharge, one mile off, like, is, is it, is this water plant prepared for that kind of concentration? Especially with this filter issue, is that one of the filters wasn't even working?
Correct. One of the filters is not working currently, and we have recommended it to be repaired and restored in the service. We are aware of some of the industrial pollution in the area, and that was the focus of one of the fourteen examples that was cited. And I encourage you to read the report. I think that might address your question in that regard. But I think another part of your question was regards to what is the water being tested for, and how can you be assured as a resident that you're drinking safe drinking water? And I think the answer to that question is to the EPA permit. It has nothing to do with state or federal funding. It has to do with continuing to test for and maintain drinking water quality, and the water has maintained and met all of those tests. So I would encourage everyone to drink the water here, and it is actually, if you do more research on it, it's tested much more frequently for much more constituents than bottled water that you buy in the store.
There goes the...
It tastes better. It tastes better, that's for sure.
Here's to you, HR. Here's to you.
We're talking water.
Now, for all you have stocks in these companies doing bottled water. Well, any other questions that are out there? Yes, sir?
Where does the sludge go now?
The sludge from the solids that are removed in the backwashing of the filters currently goes to a thickener and to a sludge-holding tank, and that sludge-holding tank is pumped out twice a year and de-watered by a third-party company that landfills the sludge after it's de-watered.
So when was the last time?
About three weeks ago.
So, if thirty-some odd months, they didn't know what was going on, so how would they, wouldn't they have, I couldn't remember something, wouldn't there be a procedure, like, the sludge is pumped out, you know, leaves, wouldn't it, some, wouldn't that play a part in management?
Two...
If, if, if a person in the plant is afraid to tell the supervisor, and what he's saying is that if the numbers, like, okay, if the flow numbers, you have so much in, so much out, and they don't match up, and the guy says, don't put that number down, you're going to have EPA on us. So you can see where someone...
I, I, you know, I'm going to stop, 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 sir. Sir, again.
Hold the question for the wrong person.
I think, I, I really, I, I understand, but you are accusing...
I'm not accusing you of that.
You can call it what you want to call it. I'm going to tell you what it is. You are accusing individuals that work at our water plant of, of almost fraud. I, I, that's, that's not...
Look at it just the way you're... If for some reason, if for some reason, you've got a ninety-year-old plant...
Okay.
And you have, and you have thirty-six months that are unaccounted for, for something that's important, you're going to have it...
And I, I don't disagree with you, but please don't phrase it that our employee intentionally did not say this. That's not what's happening here. Okay, man, I, I want to clear that.
Your honor, your honor, I agree. Can I, the thing, I think that, and everybody's question is valid, but the one thing that this gentleman cannot answer is what ifs. He was not, he was not hired to answer what ifs. Clyde, can I, can I finish, or do you want to talk all night? Thank you. So this gentleman was not hired to answer what ifs. We may have to do some more investigations into what ifs. That's our job. His job was, we did not hire this gentleman to check into what ifs. That is our job up here. So if you have what ifs, bring them to us, and we'll, we'll investigate it, or we'll have somebody else further investigate. But that was not the scope of his, what we paid him for. We not paid him to ask what, to, to answer what ifs.
Okay, so when Mayor Hyde came up, when Mayor Hyde was the mayor, this water problem came up once before in Bana. And guess what? He didn't get re-elected before, for whatever reason, I don't know. But I'm just saying that this problem surfaced once before, and this still happens to be a problem. You had, had somebody in, and I applaud the city for going in and taking a look. Hey, what's wrong with our water? Oh, it's ninety years old. We have, there is some problems, but it's still safe. The water's still safe.
Right.
If, if there's a fire, or we have great demand on our water system, it's not going to function properly because there's only four or three pumps. Run, and it's only one got two pumps because of surgery.
All right, let me, we, we, thank you very much. Again, everybody, this is the assessment. There's a strategic planning moment that'll become, and I will be happy to present what our, well, not our findings, what our plans, what we're going to do to improve it. Give us that. This was just the assessment. I know it's tough. It's tough to digest, but here's the assessment. So we have the facts now. We can all agree, we have the facts. We're going to go through, we got some recommendations. We'll put them up, present to the Aldermen, and then present to you. That's all.
And again, if anybody has any what-if questions, you can, give me a call, and we'll get it, we'll try to get them answered.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And thank you, audience, for your, your, your questions and feedback. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to, can I just try to one last thing? The report they gave, the way they designed it, and Clyde, I think you'll appreciate it, they set it up where every accusation that was there was addressed systematically for what their findings were, what the conclusion is, and what the recommendations are for each individual one. So it's a seventy-page document. They did a lot of due diligence in my, for my consideration.
Well, if that one accusation was not addressed in that report...
Did you read the report?
No.
Wait a minute now, you just said that it wasn't that, did you read the report?
Okay, not his presentation.
Let's go. Let's go. Let's go.
Go to reports. Read the report.
Item D.
Yeah, go to report.
Item D.
So was all of us?
Motion by Alderman Bolton, second by Alderman Moseo, to ratify appointments to stakeholders, participation panel, CDBG. Are there any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
May.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item E, motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Newsom, to ratify appointments to Waukegan Fire Pitching Board. Are there any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item F, motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman May, to ratify appointments to planning and zoning commission. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Thank you. Public works, Alderman Newsom.
Thank you, your honor. Item A, motion to authorize payment for an extension of the custodial contract with EcoClean Maintenance. This authorization shall not exceed thirteen thousand, one hundred and forty dollars for two months of service. Funds will be charged to line item one zero zero nine one zero six two four four one zero, and I so move.
Question?
Yes.
There's a motion by Alderman May, Alderman, old motion by Alderman, not May, motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Bolton. Are there questions to the, to the motion?
I have one.
I'm sorry, Alderman Taylor.
Is this in addition to the custodians that we have? Is, is that what this is, or...
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
This was, when we did the extension of the contract that we had, we went two months over, because, two months over the extension that we previously had. So we had to pay for the extra two months.
Roll call, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye. Item B, motion to authorize the proper city officials to award the bid for the 2017 Hawthorne Sublighting Project to the low-qualified bidder, Utility Dynamics Corporation of Oswego, Illinois, for an amount not to exceed sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. There was only one bidder. The project will be charged to fund two three nine, one two three nine, two six four nine two, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman May. Are there any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried.
Item C, motion to authorize the proper city officials to raise the approved expenditure for the 2017 street maintenance contract, approved August twenty-first, 2017, for a total expenditure under the contract not to exceed one million, four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars and five cents. Funds are currently charged to various line items, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Bolton. Are there any questions to the motion?
Should that extra amount be in there, three hundred and fifty thousand that's coming out of the tub? Should that be...
No, because that was a total. It was including part of total.
Okay, all right.
Roll call, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye. Item D, motion to authorize the proper city officials to award the proposal for the new SCADA system for lift stations number two and number eleven, to be in controls of Geneva, Illinois, in an amount not to exceed ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars. This was the only proposal that was submitted for this project. Funds to be charged to line item two three nine, one two three nine, two six four nine two, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman May. Are there any questions to the motion?
Mayor, can I just raise an issue so people understand? Because they've heard two things tonight where there were only single bids. In committee, I know I'm not on the committee, but I did ask why we weren't taking these out for bid again. And I, they were special circumstances, so I want residents to understand that. Hopefully, we won't have too many of these exceptions, because I do believe that if we only get a single bid, we should put it back out. But these are isolated circumstances.
Pretty, they're very, very special items, so, but thank you for bringing that and making that unknown. Any other questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Item E, motion to authorize the proper city officials to retroactively authorize the purchase of four turbidity meters for the water plant for an amount not to exceed eighteen thousand, ninety-two dollars and forty cent, and authorizing expenditures, including chemicals, for a total of twenty-two thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars and sixty-seven cent. Funds have been charged to line item five 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 nine one five five two five four six four. And what this is, is they had, bought the meters, and then they added the chemicals, and there is a twenty thousand dollar limit without having to come back to the council. So since it went over, they're bringing it back to the council now.
Thank you. Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Bolton. Are there any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye. That's all you have.
Motion's passed and carried. Uh, insurance committee, Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, your honor. Uh, motion authorizing the proper city officials to settle automobile liability claim C six-four-five dash one-two dash zero-zero-seven-six-four dash zero-two for an amount not to exceed sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars, and I so move.
Uh, motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Mosio, are there any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Before we go to item seven, um, we do have, uh, the appointees of the, uh, of the various stakeholders and fire pension and planning and zoning. Those in the audience, could you please stand? Sarah, I know you're here, Sarah. Margaret who? Stand up, Sarah. Margaret who? That's it, thank you. We, I, I know, we, I really appreciate this. I was trying to get through the agenda, I do apologize, but we thank you for your service. Sarah, you know, you've been there, jeez, a long time. It's nice, nice seeing you. Thank you, uh, Ms. Crisco, for your, your time here. As everybody know, it's tough to be in leadership positions, but we make decisions that other people don't want to make, within the betterment of our community. So we appreciate you and thank you. Uh, finance committee, Alderman Velco.
Thank you, sir. The, uh, finance committee met this evening and, uh, voted to adopt and approve as presented the First Amendment to the option and ground lease agreement with Vogue Tires for a cellular tower, approved on December seventh, twenty fifteen. And what transpired is Vogue entered into a lease with the city to install a cell tile, tower and ground station in December of twenty fifteen. There was a marketing time allowed in the original lease, and Vogue was unable to successfully market the tower, and to this date has not constructed it, nor has Vogue paid any rent to the city, which is primarily triggered when the tower is leased and the building permits are issued. Vogue has sought to revise its lease and reduce the overall rent to levels that it felt would allow it to successfully mark, market the tower. After the discussions with corporation counsel and the finance director, they've agreed to reduce its rents. And when it was originally proposed in, uh, December of fifteen, it was twenty-five hundred dollars a month, and the revision calls for twenty-one hundred dollars a month, and I so move, sir.
Okay, motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Newsom, are there any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried, thank you.
Item B, the, uh, committee voted to authorize the proper city officials to enter into a formal relationship with CNH Industrial to secure contributions for the purchase of an airport rescue firefighting vehicle. Contributions collected will be held in escrow line item two-three-one dash eight zero four two six, until the such goal amount of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars is reached. The Waukegan Fire Department is working with CNH Industrial Foundation and World Corporations, based at the Waukegan National Airport, to secure grants, contributions, that are sufficient to purchase an airport rescue firefighting vehicle up to eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, with no local match required. Uh, as this collection effort will take some time, the funds received will be escrowed into all monies received to purchase the A R F F. And I know Alderman Taylor has worked diligently on this with the chief. It's in my ward, and with great enthusiasm, I so move.
Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Newsom, are there any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried.
Good luck, Chief Bridges. That's a big nut to crack, sir, that's a lot of money up there. Uh, item C, the city vote, or excuse me, the committee voted to authorize the police chief to purchase a twenty eighteen Toyota Tundra SR5 for an amount of thirty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars, and a twenty eighteen Toyota Highlander LE Plus V6, all-wheel drive, for an amount of thirty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars from Classic Toyota. The lowest bidder funding on budget line item two-nine-six dash six-two-nine-six-two-six-four-nine-three. Uh, these two trucks are going for undercover officers, DEA and ICE, and the monies to be paid are not costing the citizens a dime. They're coming out of federal forfeiture fund, and I so move, sir.
Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Newsom.
I have a question.
Okay, let me get it on the floor. Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Newsom, any questions to the motion?
I, I apologize, mayor. Um, I was under, I guess I was under the impression that we don't participate in ICE. The, the Alderman said the vehicle was going to be used for drug enforcement in ICE. Is that what you said?
I don't know if that's going to be used for ICE, but to answer your, drug enforcement, we have two officers in DEA, and we have one in ICE, yes.
Okay.
And it's been that way for several years.
Okay, then I'm just, um, not educated in that field, so I will become educated. Thank you.
Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
What shall I have, sir? Reports and communications. Uh, motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Bolton. I apologize. Item A, under reports and communication, city of Waukegan official estimate that the aggregate levy to be twenty-four point five eight million for twenty seventeen tax year per thirty-five ILCS two zero zero dash one dash sixty. This is for information only, is that correct? Thank you. I apologize, Alderman, that's just for information only. Uh, motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Newsom, to approve the monthly treasure report for October twenty seventeen. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
No, old business, new business. Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Taylor, uh, to approve in the payments dated November twentieth, twenty seventeen, in a total amount of one million two hundred and fifty-eight thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars and twenty-six cents. Are there any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco. Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Uh, motion, I'm sorry, item B, uh, motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Bolton, uh, to approve regular payroll dated November twentieth, correction, November tenth, twenty seventeen, in a total amount of one million four hundred and eighty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty-three cents. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item C, motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Mosio, to approve elected official stipend in expense account payroll dated November twentieth, November tenth, twenty seventeen, in total amount of six thousand one hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty-six cents, sixty-six cents. Alderman, I'm sorry, any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Uh, motion's passed and carried. Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Villalobos, to approve PBLC holiday cash out and local one fifty comp time cash, cash out payroll dated November tenth, twenty seventeen, in the amount of twenty-six thousand eight hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty-four cents. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Motion by Alderman Villalobos, second by Alderman Newsom, to approve all rifle sales applications. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Uh, motion's passed and carried. Item F, motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Velco, to approve outdoor special events, a sponsor has applied under their directive for non-city government use of city-owned buildings and venues. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item G has already been taken care of. Ordinances. Alderman May, correction, motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Taylor, to approve an ordinance, amending ordinance fifteen dash zero dash one-one zoning calendar two-four-four-six to allow temporary reuse of the existing pylon sign at thirty-one ten Belvedere Road for Crystal Ray Saint Martin de Porre School. Any questions? Roll call? Was any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Uh, motion by Alderman Taylor, correction, or motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Mosio, to adopt an ordinance allowing the city of North Chicago to amend and expand its portion of the Waukegan North Chicago Enterprise Zones, amending ordinance zero-five dash zero dash two-zero-two, and a subsequent amendment, zero-nine dash zero dash six, zero-nine dash zero dash seven, thirteen dash R dash nine-two, and fifteen dash zero dot, dash three-nine, and that certain intergovernmental agreements by, by, and between the, the city of Waukegan and the city of North Chicago each, as amended concerning the additions of territory to the additional property tax abatement incentive for commercial and retail redevelop, redevelopment in the city of Waukegan and North Chicago Enterprise Zones for twenty seventeen North Chicago Enterprise Zone expansion. Any questions to the motion? It's a mouthful, right?
It's the thing that we do every year.
No, I, I, I'll let Bob explain.
In this particular instance, what they're doing is expanding some of the enterprise zone around Roslyn Franklin University, so that they will capture additional opportunities for students and for growth of the university, and provide a better economic climate throughout the area.
What part of it is our, I mean, doesn't it come into Waukegan?
Our, our sector, we have a, a shared boundary within that area. Ours isn't being amended by this, we're simply allowing North Chicago to expand some of theirs.
Oh, okay.
We have expanded ours in the past, they've expanded theirs, and there's still a little bit of room for some expansion left.
Is that boundary at Ten Street? Is that where ours is?
The territory itself, I'm, I'm not quite sure. I think it's closer to the university, is it not, no?
The boundaries, what are the boundaries for the enterprise zones for, for us? Does it start at Ten? I thought it was.
For us, it's basically from Grand Avenue South, they removed it and it's done more, um, to include this, uh, and also. Oh, so it goes down, okay. Most of the city's out there. Okay.
So Grand Avenue's, yeah, Roslyn Franklin's about to do some expansion over there, and they wanted to include this in their enterprise zone. So we had to amend, uh, our, our part of our agreement in order for theirs to move on. So that's, it's kind of cleaning house. I think it's with a fifty million expansion? It's pretty big. They're, they're doing some great things at Roslyn Franklin over there, for the city of North Chicago. All right. Are there any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Alderman's time. Madam Clerk.
Alderman May. Thank you. I just wanted to have a, say a couple things about our water plant discussion, and I appreciate the report and the work that the gentleman did, and obviously, you know, they were hired to do a job, and it should be, um, there shouldn't be any opinion in their report. It should be fact, factual. But there were facts that we learned tonight, and I don't mean to be all hung up on the sludge, but for thirty-four months, major operation at the plant didn't take place. And I don't think that anyone's accusing anyone of anything or intentional wrongdoing. But we obviously have a significant, um, oversight when such a major process isn't done for almost three years and no one noticed. So, I, um, I didn't feel that anyone was being, necessarily trying to point a finger at anyone in particular, but obviously, we have a major deficit in oversight and, and operations when sludge isn't removed or is removed, or who knows? We don't know. The water's safe now, but I, and I'm, you know, I drink so much Waukegan water, and I think it tastes way better than any, um, bottled water I've ever had. But, you know, it, the question in my mind, is there the potential for at a point in time that maybe there were some days that weren't so safe? I don't know. I mean, I'm, I'm fine. I, you know, I don't think that there's been any outbreak or anything like that, and I'm glad to hear it's fine right now. But there were definitely deficits found in that report. There were procedures that weren't followed. The, the thing with the camera wasn't, the procedure with the camera that went in the tank wasn't done properly. So, I, I appreciate the assessment, Mayor, and I know that it's all going to work into the stra, strategic planning, but there, there's cer, certain things that you have to recognize and acknowledge upfront about the operations at the plant, and that, that we do have some major deficits. So I'm not going to beat the dead horse. I'm glad that we did the assessment, and now we can move forward and act responsibly. And, um, certainly, everyone will have their eyes on the water plant. Tonight, we had our first step in the process for the real estate tax levy. And so, it's a process. On December fourth will be our truth and taxation hearing. So the amount that we were given tonight, I believe, is about a six percent increase over last year, six to eight percent increase. The tax levy amount that was reported to tonight, the purported tax levy amount that we're gonna... So at the next meeting, people who are interested in that type of information, December fourth will be the truth and taxation hearing, and maybe you'll have a chance to go online, uh, learn a little bit more about it, and then, uh, be prepared to, uh, ask questions and learn more at our next meeting. I want, just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and that's all I have.
Alderman Velco.
Thank you, ma'am. Myself also. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Safe holiday weekend. One item, this Friday, the twenty-fourth, is ex-Mayor Richard Hyde's ninetieth birthday. If you know him, give him a jingle, wish him happy birthday. If you know where he lives, stop by and say hello, happy birthday. That's all I have, sir.
Alderman Taylor.
I just, again, want to wish everybody, um, a happy Thanksgiving. Please be safe. No drinking and driving, please. Also, um, we talked tonight about the fire truck. Anybody who is looking from the City of Waukegan or outside of the city that would like to make a donation to this cause, it benefits all of us. So please, you know, if you know somebody who needs to get a tax deduction by the end of the year, or whatever it is, please consider making that a donation. Thank you.
Alderman Bolton.
Yes, I'd like to just announce that I'll have my first ward meeting here at City Council Chambers. It will be November twenty-eighth at five thirty PM. All those welcome.
Ald, Alderman Moseo.
Yeah, I just, again, I'm not going to beat a dead horse, but I concur with exactly what Alderman May's comments were. And again, if people have questions or have what ifs, it's a much better system if you call or email that you're Alderman or me. Then we can go back and forth. It is impossible to do it here at a city council meeting to answer every question of the public. We'd be here, it's just not efficient. That's not the way the meetings are supposed to run. So I encourage questions. I encourage what ifs. I mean, that's how you keep government honest. You have to ask questions. You have to ask what ifs. Maybe the problem was, this gentleman was just, that's not what we hired him for. But you have elected us to answer what ifs. If you have what if questions about anything, you need to come to us so that we can investigate and we can try to find out the answers. That's how, that's how it's supposed to work. I don't want anybody to think that we discourage what ifs or questions. We just have to make sure that we're asking the right person, and the person that has been charged to answer the what ifs, and in my mind, that's us up here. So if you have what ifs about anything, always feel free, at least in my ward or people in the city, you can come to me at any time or call me. It's much more efficient that way than to try to do it at a city council meeting, because we just don't have the time to get anything done if we do it that way. Happy Thanksgiving, thank you.
Alderman Villalobos.
Yes, uh, thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. Um, I'm not sure if it was mentioned, so I'll mention it, this, uh, the meeting that we're having, the public meeting for the Waukegan Lakefront Plan Review, uh, Thursday, November thirtieth at five thirty here at City Hall. It's a public meeting. Um, just want to mention that. Also, um, as my role as liaison with the Waukegan Public Library, I just want to give a quick update regarding the executive director search. There have been four candidates identified thus far. Well, it's been whittled down to these four candidates, uh, the board, uh, the library board. Interviewed two of the candidates, uh, last week, and will interview two more in the upcoming weeks. And ideally, the timelines will include by the end of December, I want to say, or approximately mid-December, to have a finalized of who the next executive director for the Waukegan Public Library will be. For those who aren't aware, the current, uh, executive director, Richard Lee, anticipates retiring, uh, in mid-January. So hopefully, we'll have some overlap where there'll be some training done and some integration with the new executive, the executive director. Because this is still an ongoing process, I have to keep some confidentiality. But the candidates that, um, I've been, I've read up on their resumes and their information, and I'm pretty sure we're going to get someone that's pretty qualif, that's going to be well-qualified, um, that's going to bring the library even further forward and serve this community. Um, so I just want to give an update on that one. Also, um, I had the opportunity to go to a League of Women Voters event on the thirteenth regarding, uh, the state budgets and how that process works, which I found very, uh, eye-opening. Uh, one of the things that I came home, came home with was, um, how the state is going to be, um, budgeting for education. And through the new system, um, it looks like Waukegan School District will be getting more funding through the state. So I'm definitely interested and curious on how our district is going to move forward with that, uh, increase in funding. So, something that I had an interest in. So I just want to share that, too. The presenter was from the Center for Tax and Account, and Budget Accountability. If you want to look that up, just type that into Google and you'll find their website and the information that he probably presented. They usually do it online, he said. And that's all I have for today. Thank you so much.
Alderman Newsome.
Yes, I'd just like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving as well, everyone in the audience.
Thank you.
That's it?
Now, I'm going to reiterate that the Waukegan Lakefront Plan Review, we're going to just go over some of our plans that have been, most of you probably seen, heard of. Just want to review them, recap them, and go from there, but I encourage everybody. Tell friends, tell families, ESPN, help me out. Thank you. Uh, to please come here and take, we, we're looking for just ideas along with what we already have. Alright, so please, please, November thirtieth, five thirty PM, Right-Hair Council Chambers. And I will bring some, Bob, cookies. He bakes. Did you know he bakes? Corporation Council bakes.
What am I doing?
Yes, some cookies.
Christmas cookies.
Christmas. Everybody, uh, motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Bolton. Happy Thanksgiving, all those in favor. Eyes happy, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Victor.